Good evening, opening the meeting of the Town of Wenham Planning Board for Thursday, May 12th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. It's a little bit after that time at this point. We are still on Zoom due to the ongoing COVID emergency. And the meeting is being recorded. And in attendance are myself and Weeks and the Chair, Peter Clay, David Anderson, Rick Woodland, other members of the Planning Board. Dan Pascarello cannot be here tonight because his daughter is graduating from college, hip hip hooray. And also on with us from the town are Margaret Hoffman and Catherine Tinsley, our staff, and a member of the public, Ms. Joanne Frishella. I hope I pronounced that correctly. So having done the formalities, Margaret, you're going to give us an update. It sounds like we have a pretty quick meeting tonight.
Yeah.
An update on the master plan. Yay.
I know. So I wanted to let the board know that we have, we've chosen a consultant, Jen Goldson. This is more, you know, this is officially letting you know that this happened. I think everyone knew that it had happened. The contract has been approved as to form by the Town Council. Jen has signed it and we're just waiting now for the signatures from the Select Board. My thought is that they may be signing tomorrow, Peter. You may have this on your agenda for as an item to sign tomorrow, the master plan contract.
Our meeting has actually been moved to the 18th.
Oh, you're not meeting tomorrow morning?
Oh, we are meeting tomorrow morning, but not to talk about, I don't.
I think because it was just a signature. You may ask you to do it tomorrow, but I'm not, I'm not sure. So.
Okay.
We can get that done. I've spoken to Jen Goldson and she is really excited to get started to work with us. She could not be available tonight and she did send her apologies. So we'll be planning a meeting with her as soon as all the contract is signed and we have, you know, some idea of how to move forward.
Before our next meeting or at?
Well, at least at the next meeting, if not scheduling something before. So this is what I wanted to talk to the board about tonight. Jen and I spoke, we had a meeting and Jen's thought is that a committee, some kind of master plan committee would be, might be a helpful thing because she anticipates meeting at least every month. And the plan, it probably wouldn't be realistic to expect that we could have a master plan meeting on top of your planning board meetings every month. If there are hearings or other business that you're taking care of, it might be difficult to combine that. So the planning board maybe have to have, you know, a couple of meetings a month. But I know we did have the discussion about a steering committee and most of the board felt that it wasn't really necessary that the planning board could manage. But I just, I thought we could maybe bring that back up tonight and talk about it a little bit and decide whether it might be a good idea to create some kind of a committee, whether it's a certain number of members of the planning board. We talked about maybe, you know, the, someone from the open space, some from affordable housing, some staff, some staff people who are essential, like maybe DPW water thing, you know, those types of committees to at least be represented at each of the master plan meetings. So if you want to have that discussion.
As the sole member who thought that who thought that a steering committee might be a good idea, I was pretty strongly persuaded by the other members that the board was eager to take this on and especially at this point, because that discussion was almost a year ago now. At this point, you know, I feel like time is of the essence. So I'm not sure I'm still of the view that going through the process of trying to identify members of the public who want to commit to monthly meetings on this is necessarily a good idea, but I'm certainly open to other people's views. Rick, you have your hand up.
Sorry. I am, well, I think I'm pretty much on the side of having some kind of steering committee and I've thought about this because it doesn't necessarily have to slow us down, but I, I think getting as many people to buy into this is going to be very important politically to then event. Because only part of the problem, part of the things, you can go with a great master plan, but then if it doesn't get accepted, it's a whole other phase of the project. So I think it'd be important to have different town members and employees and elected officials as well as a couple of people from the general public to be part of this group. Because those are going to be the, not only are they going to do the work, they're also going to be people that push out the information and get the information directly out to people so they can understand what we're going on, what's going on. I don't think it has to initially start with all of its members. I think it can start as maybe a small group, as people were saying, you know, a person or two on the planning board and few people through town. And then it could increase in size as maybe the plan got into their area. And other people could drop off. And over the time, we could pick up the community members to make, to help with that part of the feedback. But that would be my, my, my way of getting you involved.
Thanks for that. Other members have thoughts about this?
Yeah, I do. Having had to put like, develop strategic plans and push it through organizations, I would say do not create a committee. I think those of us on the planning board, I think have enough experience to and also the ability to contact key stakeholders on our own to get their input along the way. The more you involve people in the actual decision process, the more likelihood of a complete stall. The whole thing, whole process could just stop. So.
Can I, can I, can I speak? Sorry.
Let me just throw out a question for Mr. Clay before you speak, Rick. You're not anticipating saying that members of the public can't join all the meetings and engage and that we wouldn't include staff in all of those meetings, right, Peter?
No, I'm not.
Understand that, what you're saying.
Yeah. So if people want to participate and, you know, as we have open meetings on, on, on the master plan, yeah, that's fine. But to actually formally create a committee, I'm not, I'm not for that.
It would have to be approved and pushed through by the Select Board, correct, Margaret? What would the process be?
Yeah, the, the Planning Board could say, you know, here's some people we would like to see on the committee because they've approached us, we've reached out. We do have a list of people that we feel we should invite to be on the committee from, like again, I said, a lia, a liaison from the different committees that are essential to the master plan. And then there are a few people from the public who've reached out over the past year expecting this to happen sooner, Joanne being one of them. And there are a couple of other people who, from the public who are ready and, and willing to jump in and start to help. But I know the Select Board could, would appoint them. And they're, I think, ready to do that too. We did have some discussion with Tom. And he would be willing to put that on their agenda as soon as we need to, but.
Rick, you have a question, I think.
Yeah, I just, part of why I've gotten involved with town government over the past few years is I, I've lived here and I've seen a lot of things not be transparent. And I really want this to be an open, transparent process that everybody feels like they've been heard. Now, we had to make the decisions, right? We're not giving up the decision-making authority. Where this whole process of a steering committee is really, and steering committee is probably the wrong term. It might be master plan work group.
Like an advisory committee that doesn't have voting authority? Is that your theory?
Correct. More of an advisory board to the planning board. So the authorities is vested in the planning board. We don't want to give that up, but we want to get people involved as much as possible to help, well, do the work. Pretty practical, right? But also to feel like they've been heard. And so I would definitely be in favor of some type of steering, not steering committee, some kind of work group or some other term we can find to make it not sound so authoritative, authoritative, but more of a a place to develop ideas to bring to the planning board through the consulting process.
Yeah, thanks for that. David, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I think, I think I err on the side, well, let me put it this way. I we need to have public input on this as much as anything else, right? This is, this is critical. But what separates this from something like the three to five committee that I was just involved in is we have a six-figure contract and somebody who's being charged with ensuring that there's public input, that the stakeholders are contacted and come in. And so I think I join Rick, we need transparency, we need a lot of public input, engagement, key stakeholders, general public. But I think that's Jen's job. And that's what we, as the Planning Board, need to, I don't know how we put it, direct her, ask her, remind her, ensure that she delivers on that. And build, bakes it into the process because I think we're all in agreement that that's a critical component of ensuring success for the master plan. I do have concerns about delegating authority on this one. We just had an open election. Rick, Rick ran, if anyone else felt strongly about it, they could, they could have contested his seat, right? I mean, here we are. So if you wanted to be a part of this, there was an open seat, Rick ran for it because he wanted to be, but he was uncontested. So I'm not against in any way, shape or form maximizing public input and opportunities for input. My concern is that the bigger the committee, the bigger the, the more bodies we have, the slower this process can go and the more circuitous the route, which I don't know necessarily improves the outcome for the public. Thanks.
So, so I have, I have a question, Ann.
Mr. Clay.
This is Weeks, sorry.
It's okay.
So Jen, who has done this before, right? For other places. And I presume that she's probably written in, how do we tap into key stakeholders, right? So would she recommend that we have a committee?
And, and would it be an advisory committee of the sort that Rick is positing or something else?
Yeah, I don't know.
Stop, Scout. Ripping the place up.
So I'm just asking a question. I mean, she's built this into the process.
But it makes sense to try to schedule a meeting with her as soon as she signs a contract and talk through this and Dan Pascarello could be there and.
Yeah, that, that might be a good idea. And then, and then Jen can explain to you what it is she feels she'll need moving forward and how, how it will all play out.
That makes a lot of sense.
Points, yeah. And I think we should have this signed next week, so.
Mr. Woodland.
I don't know how to address your phone, so I guess Miss Weeks. I'm not that formal, but.
Mostly we aren't either. I'm just.
Okay, you're playing. Okay, okay, I'll play that a little. So I've worked with Jen in a prior thing within Wenham. And I, I love her style. She is very engaging. She always was pushing us to engage more. But I also know how like she likes to get people to buy in. So that's, that's what I'm kind of thinking. So, but I, I think it's great to have a meeting with her and figure out what she needs.
Yeah, one of the reasons, I mean, I reviewed the proposals, one of the reasons that she stood out is that public engagement piece. So it would be nice to hear from her and though. So can we, can we table this for maybe two weeks or something and try to?
I'll, so as soon as Jen's ready, I'll schedule a meeting with this board and Jen, it'll be, you know, a public meeting. We can talk to her and say, here, she wants to do a kickoff meeting. So, you know, I, I'd like to do that with the planning board as soon as we can.
And she doesn't, she doesn't need to wait for the steering committee if there's going to be one to have that kickoff meeting.
She doesn't need to wait for that. Nope. She can do a kickoff with the planning board. And then if, if you all decide, Jen will lay out the time constraints to her and how much time you're going to have to dedicate to this because it's going to be a lot. It's going to be at least a month, not, you know, every other week or so, every three weeks, because there's a lot of work to be done, of course, you all know. So this board might want to say, you know what, we want to do that and we're going to meet every other week now, or we're going to, you know, going to meet every three weeks, whatever, and schedule the hearings for, you know, your planning board hearings. Master plan meetings. We'll work it out with Jen when, when we.
I mean, I would imagine with or without a steering committee, we're going to want to do that.
So I'll, I'll work on getting that contract signed, hopefully next week at least, Peter, with the Select Board. And then I'll schedule a meeting for, for Jen to come in and talk to you.
Terrific. And Joanne, did you want to throw your two cents into the mix?
Oh, yeah, I didn't know if I could or not. Can you all hear me?
Be good at planning board meeting. Yep.
Okay, I, I have a background in planning. I worked as a, a planning consultant for 40 years and did a lot of master plans. So I totally believe in the process and the importance of what you're all doing and I, I understand all the points of view that have been expressed. I am not sure what the best answer is, but I think a transparent process, a process that involves the public. Maybe with a steering committee or a working committee that can help do some of the work, maybe not decision-making authority. I, I don't know. But I just think it's, it's so important to get a lot of input into this process because this is, it's been a long time since we've had a master plan and it's just so important to do this and to do it well. And you know, I know I want to put some energy into it and, and help in any way I can. So you know, I look forward to the decision and, you know, looking forward to finding ways that I can help and get involved.
So since we have a resident, very experienced person in this process, when we set up the meeting for us to talk to Jen, Planning Board folks, why not ask Joanne to join?
I'd be delighted to join.
That'd be great.
Okay, well, I'd be very, very happy to do that. So just let me know when the meeting is set up and I'll try to be there.
Well, I'll send you the agenda and, and the link.
I don't think we can set that time tonight without consulting with the consultant. So it looks like Catherine Tinsley has her hand up.
I just wanted to let you know that it is on the Select Board's agenda tomorrow morning to vote on the contract.
Very good.
I need to read my meeting packets before.
It helps.
Yeah, it does. Thank you, Catherine.
You're welcome. You still have several hours, Peter.
Once they sign off on that, I'll communicate with Jen. So I'll be talking to her most likely by Monday morning, right?
That's terrific. All right. So the next item on the agenda is to vote on reorganization of the board, which means re-electing chair, vice chair. And who's going to be the liaison to various committees? Margaret, do you want to walk us through that?
Sure. Well, there's chairperson, vice chair, and we have a liaison to the Community Preservation Committee. So Peter, you still on that? You're still that, right? The CPC person?
Yeah, I'm going to stay.
You want to stay on?
Not heavy lifting. Maybe it will be this summer, but I'm sort of interested in the, the whole fields thing, which is going to play out over a couple of years.
Well, I moved that Peter Clay remain the liaison to the CPC.
So moved.
I need a second.
A second, triplet, quadruple. Slam this one home.
I, I made the motion, but if Rick wants.
Second, second, yeah.
It's Rick and David. Sorry for the confusion, Catherine. Okay, then we need, Dan is not here and he is our vice chair. I think he's great.
Agree.
Can we, nominate him in absence? Or does he have to accept it?
He, I did talk to him and he said he would be willing to accept whatever nomination the board.
So no Lyndon Baines Johnson here.
You still interested in being chairperson?
I am very interested in seeing this planning process through. So yes, I would like to do that.
So maybe someone could motion to.
To move me. Unless you want to move Dan, which would be fine with me too.
I, no, I nominate, move to nominate, nominate, nominate Ann Weeks as chairperson of the Planning Board of Wenham, the Town of.
I accept the nomination and I need a second.
I second. Peter Clay seconds.
All in favor? Weeks is I, Anderson, Rick.
Hi.
Clay.
Aye.
The eyes have that. Can we nominate Dan in his absence, do we think?
Yes, I think you can, whereas he did tell me he would be willing to.
Okay, I nominate Daniel Pascarello to be our vice chairman.
Peter Clay seconds.
All in favor? Week says I.
Clay says I.
Woodland says I.
Anderson says I.
All right, we have done that. Good. Catherine, is your hand still up or is it a new hand up?
No, I'm sorry. I didn't lower it. Thank you.
No, it's okay. I just want to make sure I'm not like way out of order or something. All right, meeting minutes.
Yeah, I'll see the minutes I sent from, hold on, I have them. There was and one March and two April. When was the executive session minutes?
But I cannot participate in.
So I, I've, I found on the March 10 minutes, Catherine, page three, if we could pull that up.
I will pull them up myself.
Give me one second, Peter, just, just to find them.
You said March 10?
Yes. Please.
I've got them. Okay, can you see those?
Yep. You need to make the window larger or something? Can you do that?
Yeah. How's that? Is that any better?
Right. So page three.
Yep. It's not any better for me, but that may just have, be a function of.
Okay. The meetings paragraph. Okay, so okay, so was it, the paragraph that starts with Dennis Callahan?
Yep.
All right. So go down four lines.
Yep.
No, this area. That line, go all the way across. Mr. Callahan requested the Audubon. It should be that.
That the Audubon?
Yeah.
Yes.
Please.
No, when I was writing for the newspaper, my editor would cross it off every single time I used the word that.
Right. I know.
That is, being a journalist myself, that is not needed there. But yes, you can put it in, but it's not needed.
Okay.
I had journalism teacher did the same thing. So I'm with you.
So you're going to find that a lot, but go ahead.
So you drop down to the paragraph that says, starts with Mr. Wallen, I can't even pronounce. Responded that the Audubon.
Or that's.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
And that's it. I looked, that's it. I was cool with April 6th and cool with April 14th.
And Catherine, just so you know, I'm going to be watching all of your comments.
Especially the Oxford ones?
I have, I, I put in Oxford comments, commas, so. But it's a thing. And yeah, I need a motion to accept the minutes from the March 10th meeting of the planning board.
So moved, Anderson.
Seconded, Clay.
All in favor? Week says I.
Clay says I.
Anderson?
Anderson, aye.
Woodland?
Aye.
I guess you can vote on this, right?
I think so, yes, Catherine, right?
Yeah, administrative duty.
Yeah, that's what I thought. All right, so the April one. Should put that up. Just confirm that they're good to go.
So there are two of them, Catherine, right? There's the executive session and
Yep.
That was the four, six was the executive session.
Right. And I'm going to stop my video. I have nothing to say about this one.
Okay.
Oh wait, are we recording right now?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, you should.
So.
We should not bring those up?
No. Okay. But the board should have them and they can just vote to accept and hold if the matter has not, if the matter is still secret. Pending and secret. I think it is.
Yeah, I think it is still in litigation. So those, those minutes should not be made public yet.
Right. So you want to approve the open session and you want to approve and hold the executive session?
Okay, so let me pull up the open session one. Those were the 14th.
14th.
Yeah, the 14th. This was, um, this was a short meeting.
I did not have any changes to this. It was very minimal.
Neither did I. I had no, that, that does. Though that.
No Oxford comments.
That is a brutal.
They didn't give me a chance to look for the comments.
Got to stand on top of these things.
So what did you do with the sixth?
We haven't done anything yet. I think we're going to vote on this and then go back.
Okay.
So I'm moved to accept the meeting minutes from, what's the date on these? On the 14th of April, 2022. I need a second.
Peter Clay seconds.
All in favor? Week says I.
Clay says I.
Anderson says I.
Woodland.
Aye.
Okay, so those are disposed of. And then the six, y'all need to decide how you're going to handle those, but I cannot be involved.
Only on the executive session, right? And that's all it was. I'm sorry.
Right, I think that's all it was.
Yeah, they were the executive session. So the board should vote to accept those minutes, but not release them.
But you still have open session to go into executive session. So I still need a motion for the open session portion of the April 6th. You can't go directly. You can't go directly into executive session.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, that was the only thing they did that night, right?
Okay. It is, but I, I do have, I did submit open and executive.
Okay. So you need a motion to accept the open session minutes of April sixth.
Okay, so Peter Clay moved.
We don't have those though.
They, they were part of that, right, April sixth document that you got.
Yeah, we got three.
Did you send two separate pages?
There was, but there was nothing that happened in that meeting except we went straight into executive session.
Exactly, but you still have to have minutes for that section of the open session and truly that's all it says, David, is the vote that the planning board voted by roll call to enter an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law C three O A twenty-one to discuss strategy relating to pending litigation. So that all came from town council and that's all there is. So if you wanna just vote to accept them, we can.
I move that we vote to accept the, this is April sixth.
Open, yep.
I'm sorry, you confused me.
Open meeting, the open portion of the meeting on April sixth, twenty twenty-two, is that right?
Yep.
Yeah, Catherine, if I could just clarify, did you send two separate documents for April sixth? Okay, then I, no, I don't have two separate documents from, so you shouldn't vote on the open session part of it because I did not send those to you yet.
But there, can I send them to you right now? I just did. They're just, they're just the date, the time and who opened it and I, it would be helpful to have them approved prior to the executive session and you really don't wanna get too behind on these.
Right. Do you want me to open? You sent those to me, Catherine?
I just did.
See if I can get those, bring them up.
I don't have my, my stuff on my, the computer that I use for Zoom, I don't have my work on, so I can't share.
Okay.
Do we have to approve these in order? Or could we make a motion to accept the closed session while we're waiting for Margaret?
You can. I think that's what she's saying, she preferred to have the open session.
No, no, I just said, Margaret said she didn't have them and she didn't wanna approve them. I said, well, let me send them to you so you can approve them at the same time that you approve the executive session.
Okay.
So I moved to, I moved to approve the executive session minutes of April sixth, twenty twenty-two and to hold them pending, but.
To hold.
Hold them.
I'll second that, Rick, Woodland.
I vote aye, Anderson.
Clay votes aye.
Uh, Woodland, aye.
Any eyes have it?
Uh, this.
This is the open session.
This is the open session that you're seeing in front of you now. So there was a call to order, or I'm present. And then vote to go, voted unanimously by roll call to enter into executive session.
And I was not present, so I am going to decline to vote on this one.
I'll make the motion, I move to approve the minutes from the open session of the April sixth, twenty twenty-two planning board meeting.
Second, good, great, Peter, good.
Anderson votes aye.
Clay votes aye.
Woodland, aye.
Hey, the eyes have it.
All right, so Catherine, was that everything?
Yeah, except for the, the twenty-first, which I have not finished.
Which we don't have yet, okay, great.
Thank you so much for those.
Yeah.
Other matters, as may not have been reasonably anticipated by the chair. I do not have any other matters other than the desire to talk to our consultant, but we've already discussed that.
My, my only thought is that Dave, you and Rick may wanna like, reach out to Stephen Kavanaugh and get the fire chief's view of Wyndham. And actually, I don't know, Anne, you're, you're probably really busy, but I know that for some of these properties that he showed me, you're already, or somebody's talking to different land conservation groups.
Yeah, and Steve was a board member for years.
Right.
Was a planning board member for, for years.
Anne, I just wanna let the board know that May twenty-third day, the new town administrator will be starting.
Sorry, May which?
May twenty-third, which is Monday, the twenty-third. So a week from Monday. Stephen Hulowes is his name, and we're really looking forward to having him start. They were, and they're having a, a small gathering tomorrow at noon time at town hall to say goodbye to Tom Younger.
Bye again.
Hello.
Yeah, bye, but.
See you later.
Leave your, leave your current contact information.
To give Tom a rest, poor Tom, he's really done a great job trying to hold everything together, so, but we're really looking forward to the new guy starting.
So, so Anne, I wanna be very careful how I talk about this, right? Because it's all about, I, I don't wanna get ahead of the master plan process. But in driving around with Trapper, I'm sorry, Stephen, you know, you, you go look at iron rail and it was funny talking to Tom Younger weeks ago. He said that in his experience with Belmont and Swampskid, I guess, and Wyndham.
Stonem.
Stonem, sorry. He said that the one thing the towns are really not good at is managing the property they own. So I was talking to Steve O about this, and he's like, you know, I, I think the town still owns a piece of property down on Topsfield Road close to, close to the Topsfield line. So I asked Tom Younger, how do I find out all the properties that the town owns? And he sent me this link that's a very cool tool for, for the assessors. And you just plug in owner, town, and everything comes up. And so, I had, so I then started, and I, I ranked by value. And it, it's, it's kind of interesting, like the top nine, obviously iron rails at the beginning. But I was, then there are all these residential lots that we just own. And so I'm meeting with Steve O on Monday to try and understand the history of these lots. But it's, it's not a, it's not a minor amount.
Yeah, you might wanna take a look at the open space and recreation plan, which has a lot of maps linked up to it. And you can see like who owns what, where the town of land is, where the open, sort of, the, the matrix that was developed to try to assess, not assess like money assess, but.
I did actually do that.
Did you look at that?
And it's very cool, but these are just benign lots that are like, why isn't that? Why do we?
About three years ago, the Affordable Housing Trust with Jen, she may even have the documentation, went through almost all those lots, looking for buildable lots we could buy from the town for cheap to put affordable housing on it. So there is research done on what lots are buildable, which ones are not buildable. And how big the, all the planning boy issues around those lots, so that might be with Jen.
So I, because I have a lot of free time, I'm sorry, Anne. And Dave, and Margaret.
Yeah, we don't have a lot of free time, sorry.
I actually, I actually drove to most of these lots.
How good for you.
And it's like, well, why didn't somebody put a lot in there? And so we're gonna go back and find the history.
Yeah, and maybe that some of them are buildable and it would be good if Jen has that spreadsheet or whatever she prepared to pull that into the process.
So the one, the one thing that stuck out was that the number one top of the list, you know, aside from Buick or and all this other stuff, the library, the town hall, was iron rail. And of which, it's, it's, they, they valued it at three point three million. I have no idea where that came from or when it came from, and it's about three point four million square feet or something, of which only twenty-sixth hour is actually developed. So it's just this massive.
It's a lot of wetland.
A lot of wetland, and then there's, there's a fair amount of not wetland.
Well, there's the cemetery too, I don't know where the.
The dump needs to be cleaned up.
So, so Margaret and I, did we talk about this after or before you went to Italy? Probably after.
And before.
Somebody had done a feasibility study a while back, and I went to the three folks on the Iron Rail Commission and they had no recollection of it. They, they couldn't find it, and so God knows when that, that happened. So Margaret and I were just wondering, you know, what would a feasibility study look like? For iron rail, but I don't wanna get ahead of the master plan.
Right, no, I think this is something that comes up during that process. That is, you know, identifying pieces of property that are interesting for the town for economic development purposes because there's an economic development component of the master plan.
Right. Yeah, Margaret and I talked about that. All right, that's cool. So let, let's just, let, let it flow out.
Love your hat, by the way.
Yeah. Uh, parcel sports.
Peter, anytime you wanna come in, I do have a lot of information on most of the town parcels. Like, if Anne and Rick have mentioned, studies have been done on most of the town owned land and what's feasible and what's not. Iron rail is different though, because it's kinda commercial, you know?
Yeah, well, so this. There are two, two lots on E, E, Enon Road, it's like, hello? And then they're right, right around the corner on Hilltop Drive. I mean, I.
Yeah, we're, we're aware of those lots. Yeah, we can go over them. There are some that, there's reasons that they're not built on. But for the.
So are, are, are you around tomorrow?
I, no, no, I'll be here Tuesday. I'll be back in the office on Tuesday.
Maybe I'll try and, because I'm gonna meet with Steve O on Monday and then I can probably talk to you.
Great.
I also talked briefly about it with Gary, and he said there's all, you know, there's like trying to find the actual deeds for some of these.
Yeah.
Is, is a real problem.
Absolutely.
All right, so there we go.
Can I announce another party? Another get together.
We love parties.
On May twenty-second in the afternoon between four and six at our residence here at twenty-six Maple Street, we're doing a little meet and greet for retiring public service members. Catherine Harrison and Michelle Bailey from the committee.
That's right.
If you would like to stop by, shake a hand and get a cold drink, out in the fresh air of my front lawn, you are more than welcome. Thank you.
That's actually in my calendar.
No, not allowed to chat any business that's pending before the board.
Understood.
And what?
Between four, between four and six.
Four and six, thank you for that kind invitation. All right, hearing no other business unless there is some.
One question.
Yeah, Mr. Anderson.
Um, I'm gonna play the role of Dan Pascarello for a moment and ask if we're, if we're going, hey, Margaret, when are we going back in person? Is there any update on that?
No, the select board was gonna talk about it sometime in June. July twenty-second is the deadline for the state. So by, by July, the end of July, we'll have to be back in person.
And the other.
We can all travel overseas. I just came back and Margaret came back, but we can't meet in person in.
But we can't meet in town hall.
One other question, and you may not know, Margaret, I'm just curious. Not talking about the substance, I know we are, we have a continued public hearing in June. Are there other applications that, that are, you anticipate coming in? Are there things that are coming down the pipe? Or is it starting to get into the summer slowdown?
Um, I don't have anything that I know of that's coming. But we don't usually slow down too much in the summer.
I know, I know, but.
But yeah, I don't see anything coming down the pike and you know, I usually, if it's a public hearing, I have to know at least three weeks in advance. So it, you know, we should be able to set up a good schedule coming, coming up in the summer.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
Peter Clay motions that we adjourn.
And Alex second.
The May twelfth planning board meeting at, I can't see what time it is, at seven forty-nine.
Yeah, I would say it's seven forty-nine. I will second that motion. All in favor? Week says I.
Clay says I.
Anderson, aye.
Woodland, aye.
Thank you all.
Adios amigos.
Very good. I'll be in touch next week and we'll set something up for, to meet with Jen.
Terrific.
Thank you all. Have a great.
Thanks. Go Celtics.